Okay. The September 25th meeting of the Harbor Commission's City of Depot Bay is now open. How else please call and roll.
Berright.
Yeah.
Martin. O'Brien.
Here.
Met. Met was there.
He was there.
I think that's him, but he touched Kenny, but Zimmerman.
Here.
Okay, we have a call.
We have a call, correct. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda as it is? Hearing that, moving on, we do have correspondence from both dock side and trade winds. I suggest that we hold off until we get to item five of the unfinished business. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Good. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting, August 28th?
I did. And I approved the statement. I think most of you approved that as written.
You have a second on the minutes, approved as written?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, favor of accepting the minutes as written from the 28th August meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We are good. Public input. Anybody wish to come up on? Anybody present wish to come up and speak? Anybody online? I'm sorry.
I'm just here to listen.
Okay.
Nobody online.
Nobody online? Okay.
I'm Chad.
Well, somebody is online, I think it's him.
That should be Chad.
I think it's him, but all we have.
He's lost.
He's lost his phone, so that's a guy who's.
He texted.
I'm sure that's it. He's on the phone too.
Say hello, are you here?
In time, we saw his picture earlier, but now the meeting has started and he disappeared. All right.
Yeah, I'm here.
There he is.
Okay, good. Short dance of wonderful.
Do you approve the minutes? Okay. All right.
Okay, the Aon Officer Report, I attended the Gulf City Council meetings this month. September 3rd. There was nothing except that there was a business license update draft ordinance that they were talking about and what I understand, they're going to do a lot of discussion on that and I think the city councils don't have a workshop on business licenses. Is that what I said that way?
Another draft will come to the council on 10th one.
Okay.
Cause they've already kind of renewed it, so I'll be presenting second draft with the changes as noted. I am waiting for feedback from Councilor Masella, cause he said he had a lot, so it might not come before 10th one and I need to follow up.
Okay. All right. And on yesterday evening's meeting, they come a lot of stuff, a lot of talking going on. And one of the items in which the Harbor Commission may be interested is they've talked about the land acquisition of the Harbor Park property down there. There's a lot of discussion and city council decided the property owner wish would like to keep the property as an entity and not break it up. And the city really only wants the harbor adjacent property. So no real action was taken, but the door is going to be kept open through the discussion. The property owners came up with a $2.2 million asking price for the entire parcel.
How big is it?
Uh, I don't remember, something points something. Is this six?
The tire, the tire piece is probably nine point seven.
Nine point seven, okay.
But the portions that the council or that they originally said they would not consider, which was splitting it up and just doing lots one through four. I think that is maybe, what do you think, a couple papers?
Is this the property right behind the harbor office?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, to the, yeah.
Probably two.
Okay. Moving on to the Harbor Master and City Administrative Reports.
Okay. Been working on Dock One, getting that ready for the project coming up here. Took off 23 of the original aluminum cleats and replaced those with stainless steel ones. So that way we have a stronger pipe or stronger cleats for all the boats to be tied up to, not only during the construction, but also winter years to come. Something that these cleats should not ever need to be replaced hopefully because the dock were out before these things do. All of that, getting Dock One ready, went down and got 11 more tires to throw over the pilings so we can have extra tie offs during the winter time for all the extra boats too. So I'll be talking with the coastguard here next day or so, trying to figure out a good high tide and see when I can get as many personnel from the station to help assist throwing those tires over the pilings. We've done it before, they were generous enough to donate their time to the cause and made it happen, made it work really well.
Is that coming to PT for the day?
I think it could be actually.
Kind of a rain toss, it'd be like around.
Well, until we lose them in the water. Um, let's see, had a piloting guys on Dock One that we finally got a chance to repair also. Um, let's see. Oh, my notes are a little bit off right there. Uh, this month we were able to meet with Kenji, he came down from Army Corps of Engineers who came down and brought another worker, Ron, and I can't remember his last name, but I took them out on the skiff and they took a lot of pictures of the crack on Cracks Coral in the seawall. Yeah, and the corner next to the fuel bunker also. They were going to go back and sometime sooner than later, we're going to talk with them and set up a time for them to all meet up and discuss what can be, can be done. He made it sound like they would start discussing this process and also talk on sandwich, that this is going to be something that they're going to try to start tackling in 2025. Uh, they didn't want to do anything this year because of their project going on, they didn't want to be anywhere in the way of that. So they're waiting for the dock project to be finished before they come down here and start looking into the seawall repair part.
And they're going to be bringing a structural engineer to, to, to look at this and I guess Kenji was shocked that the blowout was as big as it was and as much as it was, so.
And he was able to see a few other places in the parking lot where it looks like it starts to settle down single with it too, so. Then they took a lot of pictures of it, so at least they are aware of what's going on and are starting to plan for what might be, maybe done, so.
Uh, let me, let me add to that, that Kenji also took pictures from just off the ramp in the fuel dock of the new lawn behind the checkdown, so.
Oh, yeah. The two islands back there, yeah.
You gotta take that back to the.
Well, we're definitely hoping like families comes to take a look at those.
Yeah, so, um, at least it sounded like that Depot Bay is definitely on their list of things to address this year, so that made me feel better that we weren't forgotten about that. Uh, Kim and I have met with a couple of representatives from different surveillance companies, uh, we met with Hayak, they're the company that cameras all of Port of Newport. And we met with them and walked around and were still waiting to hear back on a quote from them, but then we also met with
Vercata.
Vercata. I know I would say it right. And they're not in state, but they have, uh, they're a bit more expensive, but they have some very interesting technology that they work with. And the individual that we talked to, they gave us the rundown on it and actually he is scheduled to even come down to Depot Bay. I said on the.
The 10th.
The 10th.
The 10th, yeah.
10th, yeah.
Yeah.
So he'll be down here to show us even more and they even sent us a couple of sample cameras for us to set up and see if we really like those.
Yeah, he gave us a trial run, um, it's at least a month that he said he could extend it, so basically we're going to be putting up some of the cameras in some locations that he's recommend, that you know, these cameras that he's recommended based on what Roy and I told him we wanted and they're going to let us test drive them and see how they work. Um, which is kind of has the, the box sitting out there, we can put it and come and help get it installed, but it's kind of a new program to where I didn't, you know, trial run it, the security cameras, I was surprised.
Are these going to be put in the same area of where our existing cameras are, so there's a comparison of what?
Probably some of them will, I mean, we'll look at what the ones where we most might want to save, like where the most activity is right now. It's a little different because there's less activity on the docks down there right now, but you know, with the season, like we'll go put it in some of those areas, you know.
It's high pixel, so easier to see slices close.
And they were quite amazing, the, the level that they can see.
Yeah, they had zoom. The zoom on those were pretty incredible and also just the AI technology that he has also where you can just type in what blue hood inspection and it brought up.
Blue hood or red hood inspection, red hood is age really.
Any blue hood inspection within the last month that a camera has seen, so wow, it was.
Yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty awesome.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, what, he really, he really got my interest when he said he got a program that will let you test drive these and I'm like, wow? That's awesome, we never heard of that before, so. You know, be kind of cool. He's called other companies, at least one other bit, we haven't gotten any responses, so.
Yeah, we, anything from that, one Hayak company showed up, but even though they haven't given us any ideas on the prices, right, more than just check out the whole time.
All right.
And that's what I have.
Okay. This Harbor Worthless is for later on?
No, the Harbor Worthless, um, is that one of the things we want, make sure everybody knows just what we're always doing down there. So I asked him, we're going to have a different format for next time, but I asked him, say, you know, let's just keep it running list so that not only do me and Brady and the council know what's going down in the harbor, the Harbor Commission knows what he's doing down there. Because there's a lot of, there's questions sometimes about what does the Harbor Master do?
Some things that don't need to make the list.
By the way, we changed the title on that to Seat Protectors.
At the time I didn't realize this was getting presented.
I know, I know. It's okay. Thank you, you see it. Yeah, I was asked about it and I said, no, change that.
Okay, is that it? From administrative as well?
Yeah, I didn't have, I didn't have anything.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, first item is the guide boat operation requirements, do we have any update on?
No, based on some other things going on, I have not had a chance to dive back into that yet. Guide boat for the next meeting.
I just want, this is the information, uh, being a guide myself, I got an email from Cindy at the Florida State Marine Board. Apparently there's plenty of other ports that are having the same problems we are with the guide services.
Yes.
Okay.
So the recommendation, a lot of the recommendations too is exactly what we're talking about, signs for vehicles that are customer, anybody, all I'm saying is we're not the only ones, but there are certainly, we're having our share, sure.
All right. About self-fueling at the fuel.
I have no new update on that one.
Okay. Fine. Okay, and item three is the seawall inspection site visit, I think we've already covered that sufficiently. Uh, item four, Dock Two, before replacement project schedule, um, we've heard from Advanced American Construction that they are on time, on schedule, on plan.
Yeah, yeah.
And the city is also on schedule on plan?
Yeah, Dock One is just a few things here and there, like that are going to be touched on, but it should be, well, we can start moving boats over there right now. And I feel confident with them being able to hold on just fine. Um, I feel like I should be taking like, uh, one part, but I've been told that that is, that is Advanced Americans deal and so I'm not that, any of those, so.
We're paying them a big budget.
Yeah, I'm trying to use self-control and not start taking those apart. Um, I've been giving a lot of information to, a lot of people just walk up foot traffic asking about the project and informing them. A lot of rumors going around saying that the project's been delayed, tell them it's not, uh, that the boat ramp's going to be closed the entire duration. I've been telling them it's not, so. And then a lot of people also saying that they just didn't even know that the project was happening and I remind them that we put a letter in their annual mortgage renewal packet, so and that there are signs at the top of every single ramp, so. Done much more than we can do.
No, and I don't think we should do it. I think if, uh, can't read all that stuff and I mean, they shouldn't be operating a boat in the ocean.
A lot of people have more than their boats are here and then never.
Yeah.
Is your wish is still here, is that what you're talking about?
Uh, they should be doing a bit more to work in February and then they need to be completely pulled out and all done by April 15th, I believe it was.
So on the boat ramp though, um, there may be periods of.
Yes.
And you, yeah.
And I tell them that it may be closed down, just roll there in the process of using it, but when they are not actively on the boat ramp, they will, are having instructed to leave all their gear off the side so people can still access it.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to item five. Oh, wait a minute, uh, we do have the, before we get into that, I asked the, we did get a re, the report on the Kaiosk.
Oh.
And, uh, end of August, uh, from August 1st through 31st, we, the city, um, picked up, uh, 3180 bucks in minutes. Are we still taking a look at past years and this stuff and we're still doing much better than we, I, I should, I mean, rephrase that, still better than we were before we put the Kaiosk?
I didn't look at last year, did you look at last year?
I don't think that we've done, looked at that recently, I think it's been more about budget, this year's budget versus, yeah, what we're actually making.
Yeah, but from, from all indications from pre, previous, uh, bay reports, um, we're doing much better than we were. Okay, now moving on to crap lot storage. There has been a lot of, there's a lot of backup on this, uh, from back, starting back last August with, uh, when the insurance agent came out and took a look at the docks and was not too pleased with what, uh, she saw regarding all the equipment and cables and all, and everything. It, it really looked bad. Then I went down after I became aware of this report and looked and it looked bad. So since then, uh, a lot of actions have been taken on, uh, cleaning up the, the docks. And today, well, for some time now, they look a lot better than, than they did. The city council had, uh, a lot of discussion on, on crap pots storage. And, um, after a lot of deliberation on their part, I was, was not in town for a good part of September last year, so. Anyhow. They, city council had a lot of discussion about it and everything and then on, uh, I think it was a ninth, meeting on the 19th of September last year, the city council voted unanimously to remove crap pots from the docks effective October 15th of this year. And, um, requested that other crap pot storage, um, possibilities be explored. Anyhow, so since then, and also, um, back then, uh, we had some reports also from, uh, PND Engineering who, they're the ones that did all the engineering on the docks. On possible alternatives and, or at least one or two that was suggested by city council members. So what we have been doing since then is, uh, trying to figure out, okay, what can be done on the crap pot storage. One of the alternative storage areas, uh, we looked at was the, on the dock side, the east side of the parking area it is, uh, to see how much, if there was any place adjacent to the, um, docks that we could store crap pots. And there is no, no place, no area, no room to store crap pots at any time. Might get one or two stacked up, but in other words, it's, it's just not good for crap pot storage. And we also looked at the fish pan plant pier. And that, uh, pier is probably 10 to 15 feet above the, above the water level. And to use that requires using the city hoist to get the pots from the boat deck up to the pier. Uh, and that would require a city employee to be available at 500 or whatever, whenever they load it and, uh, that's going to cost the city some money. Uh, but none of the current regulations, it's required for the city employee to operate that hoist. So that doesn't, uh, look too at all promising, yeah. Uh, one of the suggestions out of city, uh, one of the city council members was to look at the troller pier at the north end of the harbor. And the pier height above the boat deck, uh, at that point, um, at a, it wasn't necessarily high water, it was just normal.
Medium tide.
Medium tide, which is about five foot, four inches, I measured. And, uh, there's a picture somewhere, the city has it, uh, of the deck end. I just had him put the pot on the deck to lift it up and that would have been lifted up from quite a ways up there and the only entrance to that currently, to that troller pier is on the east end and it's a very narrow entrance, looks to me like what I just, maybe was the ramp, where the ramp down to the dock, it used to be there, was, right? Okay. Now, if we put a dock in the water there, down the, right on the water level and store it, we really couldn't, you can't have a dock big enough to store all the pots that exist right now. There's an additional problem with putting a dock, actually there's more than one problem, putting a dock in water there. And that is the congestion, uh, because the boats, uh, leaving from Dock One, ma, mostly Dock One, you know, getting, getting ready to pick up trade winds and passengers. Uh, they kind of form a line there so they can get up in dock and everything. And the coastguard is frequently, uh, operating in their practice, whatever, you know, towing bolts in and everything. So it's a pretty congested area, you wouldn't be able to put too many boats picking up crap pots at the same time. I think maybe you could get two in a decent dock, maybe three. A third problem with that is the mitigation issue. If we put another dock in the water, we're covering the, uh, the water, we're covering the space and we already had to do mitigation because on Dock Two, which is longer and wider now, the National Marine Fisheries Service has required us to do, the city to do a, um, a study. As part of mitigation for covering the water surface area more. So there would be that issue, even if they put, if they put a dock over by the, um, fish plant pier, we'd have the same, same issue. And the same issue with, uh, and more of an issue there with congestion because of the fuel, fuel dock there. So those, those are the, the areas that we looked at closest to the harbor to see if there was a, an alternative to storing one of the docks. And really could not find a viable alternative to storing one of them. There is, uh, further, a, uh, an economic, um, dilemma faced by the charter fishing, charter fishing operations. And, uh, the letters we got today, um, and the letters we've had in the past from the charter fishing operations have, um, expanded on, on the problem. If we were to store the crap pots on the boats themselves, then that would eliminate the opportunity to do well. If we took the, um, if, if we had, so well washing wouldn't be able to do it because right now combo trip, which is what the, uh, charters use is a, uh, they take the crap pots out and depending upon the number of people, fishermen or women on board, to how many pots they go, but they can't take up the 10 pots. And they go out, they drop the pots in the water, go to the fishing ground, do their ground fishing, come back, on the way back, they pick up the pots and bring them back to the dock. And then they have, uh, about a 30 minute turnaround period to get the pots off the boat, clean the boats up and get it ready for well watch and then go out and do well watching trips. So it's a pretty tight schedule. And if there are any delays in that, and that puts, puts, pushes things back even further. We asked, I asked the, we, actually, we asked the charters to let us know what, what kind of an impact that they, it would have if they could not do both well watch and combo trips. And basically, well, actually, and let me explain. During March and April, they make fewer combo trips, but from May through October, each company makes about 30 to 35 combo trips a week. Carrying anywhere from four to 10 pots. If they were unable to do one or the other, the annual economic impact on these companies and the boat captains for one charter company would be 75% for the bottom fishing trips. And 57% of the trips for the other charter company. And whale watching accounts for approximately thirty-three percent of one charter's business. Ken, do you have an idea of what, what percentage the whale watching trips are of your income and operation?
Uh, yeah, Jack, I'd, I'd say about forty percent.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
So that's a, a pretty significant loss of income and business for these companies. And both charter companies employ boat captains, deckhands, additional office staff, fish players, and crab hookers. So this affects everybody. And it's possible that, well, if we lost, if we were unable to do either combo fishing or the whale watching, it could be, it'd have a negative effect on downtown businesses. We don't, while the extent of such an impact is unknown, what is known is dependence on Deepwater Bay economy on what draws people to this town. And not everybody goes out in a boat and goes home. A lot of people downtown come from that. And during our last special meeting, we talked about a way to assign crab pots to the board hold. And what we decided during that work session was that the maximum number of pots stored on the docks be determined by the length of the moorage classification from the smallest to the longest vessel. Class A vessels, which are twenty-five feet or less, would be allowed four pots. Class B vessels, which are twenty-six to thirty-four feet, would be allowed six pots. And class C vessels, which are the thirty-five footers to the fifty-two footers, would be allowed ten pots. Now, not all vessels in the thirty-five to fifty-foot, two-foot category would carry ten pots. One of the concerns that engineer, PND Engineering brought up was the abrasive action of the pots on the new deck, deck surface. And we had talked about that quite a bit. And one of the ways to mitigate those abrasive issues is to get the porous rubber mats to put under the pot steps. The pots are about thirty inches in diameter, and they weigh with the line and buoy in them thirty pounds, as stored on, on the deck, on the dock. PND has recommended storage of thirty pots per float unit. And that they possibly restricting those thirty pots per float unit to the westernmost float units on each dock. So that's one way to also mitigate the weight and the number of pots there. One of the proposals that we would have would be that on the new docks, crab pots would be stored on the east to west midline of each dock with a maximum of thirty pots on each float unit. Or only on the last three float units of each dock. Crab pot storage must not interfere with the ramp to float access on any dock. On docks one and two, crab pots will not be stored each as a first piling after the ramp flow interface on the dock, on their dock. Because one and two have, two will still have their pilings down the center. Docks three and four will have the pilings on the outside, so there won't be any, any down the middle. And on docks three and four, which don't have the pilings down on the, the new docks, the docks, the pots will not be stored within eight feet of the west edge of the ramp transition plate, the dock interface. At, at the bottom of each ramp is a transition plate that slides along depending upon the tide. And the, the westing edge of that, that point, an eight foot east, no, no pots. Crab pot storage must not interfere with the safety zones around the fire suppression equipment on each dock and may not be stored on finger docks. No, I, I've never seen any stored on the finger docks. I've seen them placed on finger docks when people are finishing up the trip or something. But anyhow, excuse me, just to make it clear, that nothing, no, no, no pots on the, on finger docks. And no items of any kind will be, be stored on top of the crab pots. Now, the harbor master will check compliance with these requirements. And any boat owner non-compliance will receive a warning letter from the city. And any further non-compliance will result in the boat owner's loss of ability to store crab pots on the dock. Just, there's no three strikes and you're out, it's one strike and you're out. And no other items such as coolers, containers of any size may be stored on the docks. All ramp steps that some of the boats use to, for people to access their boats must be stored on midline of the docks when not in use and must not interfere with the fire safety zones or fire suppression, around the fire suppression equipment. Want to make it, that everybody understands that the new power and water pedestals are located on the outside of the dock. So there won't be any, they're not going to be located down midline, so there'll be no lines or water lines or liquid lines extending across the dock. And all of that stuff that I just mentioned would be included in the harbor regulation, included and classified, within the harbor regulations, the existing harbor regulation. So, that's kind of a quick and dirty, and if anybody has any questions about any of that stuff, or any comments, let's do it. Because we need to make a decision if we're going to have tonight, if we're going to have, present, if we're going to present this to the city council.
Right.
On the first of October, which is next Tuesday.
I would like to make one comment if I might. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that by going with the class rating, even though there are some boats that will not have pots, they all have the ability to have pots.
Correct.
So that would actually, when you look at what your numbers are, that changes your numbers. And Lori has provided a, this current numbers chart, I thought I got it right. So if you look at what they're looking at, based on PND's recommendation, which is what I, I think accounts for about three hundred pots in total.
Yeah.
If you say that these class categories are about this number of crab pots, assuming every boat is, takes care of a lot of them out, so far about five hundred and seventy-eight crab pots. Now, again, I understand that not every boat will have them. But the point is that if you set this as policy, every boat could have them.
And also, these numbers, when I was taking those, those are for basically worst case scenario. A lot of, we have a lot more than just a handful, you know, like fourteen, fourteen category A boats down there. I'd say the majority of the boats down there are in category A, but I'll be putting a lot of smaller boats in the larger slips when the time comes. So that number, there's a good chance it will be a lot less than that. But the way the drawings are written from PND, this is what the worst case scenario with these, with these mountains crab pots allowed for those categories, it could be.
Right. And, and there are ways, again, to, you know, I, I'm of the opinion, and I don't know if people spend more time down on docks than I do, that not everybody goes out. You know, the recreational pots are considerably less. They probably weigh about maybe twenty-five pounds, and they're, and they're somewhat smaller than the, than the ones the charter, charter uses. And the charter companies, they don't use the big commercial pots, which is significantly larger than here. What I wanted to say. Oh, I'd be very surprised if we came, I, I've never seen more than, the last time I remember counting the pots down there was three hundred something, on dock one through, one, two, and three.
The numbers that were brought into PND for them to do the recommendations at that particular moment was three hundred ninety-eight pots on the dock, at all those docks at that particular point.
Yeah. Those sometime, those.
Maybe just last October, or not October.
No, it's.
A bit August, it would have been.
Yeah, it's a close season.
Oh, yeah, at least a year ago.
At least a year ago.
Something like that sometimes. Anyhow, yeah, I, I, I see this, and this, this, again, how to say, it's a worst case scenario. And I don't think we were going to, I'd be very surprised if we ran up against that. Just, I doubt very much if people are going to go out and buy.
Exactly.
Pots, just to put them on their boats.
Yeah, get this, oh, we do, let's go get them.
Yeah, I, I, maybe a lot, but I, I just, you know, if I would, if I had a boat down there and didn't do crabbing, and then was told I could have crab pots, but if I didn't do crabbing, why would I go out and buy them? Anyhow.
Well, we also have to remember that people relinquish slips and new people come in.
True.
So we, we, we have to look at it from the aspect of what potentially could come in into that slip moving forward. So what we have today may not necessarily, I mean, I've got a list of people that relinquished over the last few years.
Yeah.
And a list, and a list of waiting lists, people that are going to be going in that may, you know, so we have to keep that in mind.
Yeah, definitely, definitely have to keep that in mind. But also, there has to be a restriction. If we, if we use, put pots all the way from east to west within the confines that I've mentioned here, so we, we use all the float sections. If we use the midsections of, mid, midsections of, midsection number of float units on the new docks, that would weigh, because of the way they're built, the way the structure of the new docks would be on, on the mid float units, they would weigh down the dock approaching the, lowering the freeboard between the water and the, and the cleat, hardware. There are two calculations that PND made. One was three quarter, three-eighth of an inch, and the other was half an inch drop, under certain conditions. But if you load up the pots, you're going to, more pots you put on, the more which you're going to have on the, on the float sections, float units. Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to bring into this? So what, what, what does the council want to do? What do the commissioners want to do? Power of commissioners. Do we press forward with?
I would like to say that, we have, you know, we need to present the city council. Is that basically your presentation, our, our thoughts and feelings, correct?
Well, yeah, and that's actually, that, yes, and it's also the reality if, if there, if crabbing is going to be allowed.
Right.
Dog right here in the city.
And I would like to see something put together, present this to the council on the first of October, using the information you just put out.
Yeah, and this is, you know, none of, none of this stuff that I've talked about is, I mean, I didn't make this up for me.
No.
We've been talking.
That's the stuff we've been talking about for months and months and months and months and months.
Yes, I was trying to put it into it.
I appreciate you exhausting all the other options too, that, that was long, so.
Yeah. And I understand that, you know, there's a big concern of liability and, and, you know, risk. Because any endeavor that you undertake, you're going to have risk. And there's always a risk, I mean, that's what insurance is based on, risk, and minimizing risk. Can't ever, I don't think you can eliminate risk completely. But the insurance agent has, has never said, to my record, and, and anything I have read here, the insurance agent has never said you cannot store dock, pots, crab pots on the docks. She does mention risk and everything else. How the crab pots belong to the boat captain, the owner, and the charter fishing company. They have insurance that covers anything that they have stored on the, on the docks. And if the city wanted to increase, and the city also has identified, has identified itself from a number of things. Am I correct in that?
Right. The current new application has a waiver responsibility.
Yeah.
That says that the captains and the morgue owners take the responsibility.
Yeah, yeah. So there wouldn't be any responsibility on the city part to cover any, any problems that occur or result from having crab pots stored on the dock.
That's not necessarily true. We could very well be sued as well.
Well, yes.
Have.
Yeah, I, I didn't say it couldn't be sued, it's technology sued.
They would probably elect us, uh.
Yeah. Well, I do, I do know that everybody, at least in, in terms of the company that I insure, the city is named and disowned sure.
Yeah, we do require that.
Yeah, right.
Um, okay.
Hey, Jack.
Hello.
Hey, could I, could I chime in here?
Please.
Yeah, you know, I mean, the, the, the main issue is the liability. And, and moving these pots around are just going to create much, much more liability than letting them sit right outside of our boats. You know, I mean, I mean, the, the, it's night and day, literally. But I thought that letter that we just got, was it today or yesterday, that you added on for the, the additional letter that you wrote, was very well put. Where you outlined pretty much everything that you said tonight. And I think the letters from the two charter companies are pretty meaningful and, and, and effective. So I mean, I think if we just read those aloud to make sure that, that everybody's read them, that, I mean, I, I, I think that's a pretty good packet that we can put together.
Yeah, and, and what, you know, you referred to it as a letter. Basically, what that was, was a discussion, discussion points for a nice meeting here so that we would all have a thing. I, when you said letter, I thought, I didn't write the letter. Anyhow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but PowerPoint, PowerPoint.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but I thought that was really well done, and, and I thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, I mean, the bottom line is, the liability is, I mean, moving these pots around is, is so much more liability than just letting them sit in the center of the dock, that, you know, and of course, the economic aspect of, of everything also, I mean, it's just, it's, just, the whole thing is complete, completely ridiculous for a fishing village, so, anyway, that's about all I got to say.
Okay, and now, another thing too, that, that I'd like to mention, if I can dredge it up again. It was important. Well, if you want to give me your numbers, I'll call you a train of horn. Let me talk amongst yourselves.
I like the dredge, I'm, I'm better.
Oh, yeah. It has to do with, with risk and everything else. I have been unable to find any incident of any injury or safety issue with the crap pots, talking with people who, like I said, spend a lot more time in the harbor than I ever did, involving the storage of the pots on the docks, before that. And if somebody, you know, can come up with some stuff, I wish they would, but they haven't been able to, they haven't brought it to my attention, anyhow, up to this point. So, I'm, I'm at a lust as to what more we can do to mitigate the problem, or the perceived problem of storing crap pots on the dock. I do think that it may be necessary, we may find it necessary to reduce the number of crap pots we store even more than the PND has recommended, and if that's the case, we'll, we will have to live with that. All things up to the city council to, to make a decision based on, on the information that we have gathered, and the information that we give to city council. What I remember is that I haven't been told of any incidents involving crap pots that have been stored on the docks, any safety issues or any incidents. And keep in mind also that, you know, we do have children on the docks, company, their parents and everything, and their parents are responsible for controlling the children on the docks, and that's, that's in the range as well, so.
Which you know won't make any difference whatsoever.
I understand, I, I just.
They might care if the parents won't matter.
Yes, understand that, but I doubt very much, if, okay. I doubt if a child is going to pull over that crap, crap pots that are maybe five pots high. This might, I mean, I have, I, I have trouble with that, anyhow.
Is there a limitation on how high you can stack them?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there would be. It's right now, they stack about five, five high, and so that would be, kind of, that wouldn't be the maximum.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And.
Doing the math, if we're, we're allowed ten pots, for example, they stack five.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I currently have, and each stacks about four and a half, five.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, I need a vote from the commissioners on do we proceed and present this to city council, either next Tuesday or at the very latest on the, on the, at the second meeting? I would rather do it next Tuesday.
Do we need a motion?
I think so, yes.
I'll have to make that motion.
What, what motion is that?
What you just said. We take the information you compiled, and if we talk about that, then we can discuss it forever, and.
Present it to the city council. Do I have a second on that motion?
I second it.
Okay, removed and seconded, that we move forward and present this information that we have gathered on our, on the harbor commission recommendations to city council, that they accept, that they allow crap pot storage on the city docks with the limitations proposed by the harbor commission. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I agree. All right, unanimous, we shall move forward with that.
Thank you, sir.
I will, okay, Kim, I have a question for you, when do you need this for Tuesday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, right, eight o'clock or five o'clock, maybe?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, thank you, okay. I will see what you have. Do they, okay, I do have another question. Does the city council, you know, give, give the vote for it, do they need my blocking paper to go?
No, I mean, if you're just going to, you present whatever you want to present to them.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. All right, moving on to new business, we have a request for proposal for harbor fueling services, that, it's a draft that city, county, city staff has presented, and hopefully everybody's had a chance to read it. I did, there's one, there are a couple of questions I do have. One is, it says, bids will be, the price per gallon mark up above the oil price information service by United Communications Group, Rockville, Maryland. And then it says, average rack pipe price for Eugene Oring, what does that mean? Is that, or anyone does that?
Oh, I, I, that is just an information that I put in there, and I still need to do some more research on it, to find out exactly what resource we're going to direct people to, that was in one for, oh, one of the coastal cities, um.
Okay, all right, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I need to double check the exact fuel, I took it off of the last scope of work, but that might have changed, so they did a request for proposals. Um, yeah, so I, I took the scope of work off, some of the data off of that, but the references to resources, I need to double check.
Okay, and under the scope of services, a, a question I had was, do we need to specify that a single tanker without trailer be used? Because, I mean, they could bring a trailer around to park it somewhere else, because you can't get through, right?
Yeah, there would need to make sure it to be a single truck.
Okay, so, do we need to put that in the?
I don't know if we should put in there what, because we don't know what they have, we want to see what they offer.
Well, I, I guess.
We can say something to the effect that please note space is limited, that sort of thing, for what they need to get on there. We didn't put anything like that in the last part.
I'm sorry, did you?
We didn't put anything like that in the last part.
Right, but I think that, you know, one of the companies is kind of local, and the other one is not as local, and when they come south, they may bring the tanker with it, and a trailer.
But he, they know, they know Deepo Bay, at least that one, who knows Deepo Bay.
They're in the southern Toma, so.
But we can put something in there, just qualify that they have small space.
Whoever's bidding understands that, you know, you can't pull through like you do in gas station and tie up, you know.
Part of what they should do is their own due diligence back into a site visit, so.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, those are my, those are the questions I have on this. Anybody else have any questions on this draft harbor fueling service request, RP? Hearing none? Okay. Thank you.
So, I can tell the council that you have reviewed it, I will probably, I will get that information updated regarding the exact where they look for this, but.
Okay.
I forget where to, from, I lost them later.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
There's just something I forgot to ask, and then when more people ask me today, what's going to happen to the docks, the dock?
They're getting exposed to by the contractors.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
You know, one point we talked, this is, an aside, I guess, one point we talked about in, in one of our commission meetings about saving the cleats and.
Yeah, telling off memorabilia.
The memorabilia thing?
Oh, actually.
If we want to do that, we need to have that done before the first of November, so. Maybe we could, because we could, I mean, we could, we, that's a royalty, we could remove those, right?
My red mouse in his pocket.
Say what?
I don't think they'd come off as easy.
You were referencing the fact that you're volunteering city staff to pull these cleats off for you.
They've been on there for a long time.
And they would require, require ourselves all to cut through the steel and pull them onto, onto the dock.
Thank you, moving on.
Yeah, I would say, get a saw and cut off a chunk of plank, you know, that'd be a lot easier.
Wait, the boat's gone.
I don't worry about it, and those docks, we don't need more holes.
Okay. All right, meeting wrap up, okay, so what we've basically decided is to present to the city council what we discussed this evening on storage of crap pots in Deepo Bay Harbor. Remember, it's, it's a multi-use harbor, charter, recreational, whale watch, commercial, and both the harbor and, and the docks, okay? And we also decided not to pull, pull the cleats from the old dock. Good luck, none, tonight, you know, less time than I thought it would, but I appreciate everybody's input. Commissioners comments, Ted, got anything to say?
Oh, nothing that I haven't said before.
Okay, Jack?
No, I mean, we did a public argument tonight, so I'm excited to see your letter.
Me too.
Yeah, I just want to extend my thanks for putting all that together, and I do personally feel that this is a very fair compromise on our part for the usage and storage of the pot, because it definitely is going to be an impact, cannot.
Okay, I have no further comments, I've talked enough, I think, this evening. So unless anybody has anything further to say, the September 25th, 19, 2024 meeting of the harbor commission is adjourned at 7:06 PM. Thank you all, and I apologize, well, I offered public comments, so I guess.
Night, Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Night, Ted.
See you, okay, bye.